I would like to call the May 19, 2020 Council Meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins? I know he's here. And Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum present at this time, so I'm going to proceed on with the meeting. As in the past, we will not have the Fledge of Allegiance tonight, but I will ask us just to have a word of prayer together. Gracious Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for all that has been presented in this day. We thank you for how you're moving your hands and bringing us together as a community and allowing things to unfold right now before our very eyes. We thank you because we know this is a season that we'll never see again and we've never seen before, but we thank you because you're moving mightily even in the midst of everything that's going on. We ask you to continue to keep your hands upon all of our business leaders and all of our community leaders, continue to let them be mindful and aware of the situation at hand. So we pray these and many more blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
So, we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first is for the council to receive the budget from the city manager. The second is to adopt the resolution extending the authorization to conduct our meetings by teleconference. And finally, discussion on the feasibility of allowing restaurants to use the sidewalks to serve customers in an effort to ease the burdens placed on them by the COVID-19 pandemic. But this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to interim city manager, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Griffin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be sharing with you tonight on the screen the presentation that was in your box with your budget, just so that you'll have something to follow along with in terms of my presentation. You should be able to see that now. My words will be fairly short here tonight, but I did want to have the opportunity to share with you the thought process that went into putting this budget proposal together. It's a little bit different than the way the budget has normally been proposed, but I felt like I wanted to give you some information at the front end that might enable you to have some questions when we begin discussing next Tuesday on the 26th. I don't anticipate we'll have a lot of budget discussion tonight, or any budget discussion tonight since you just got the proposal, but you'll have a week to digest it and I'll certainly have answered any questions in terms of any things I shared with you tonight. There were some assumptions about putting this budget together that we worked off of, and those are in front of you, and I'm going to go through each of these assumptions individually throughout the presentation. But the five assumptions are, first of all, that revenue will decrease. Secondly, that the current level of personnel services spending should be maintained if at all possible. Third is operating spending had to be decreased. About that more. Fourth, adjustments and amendments will be required multiple times during this budget cycle. And then services and repairs most likely will lag, as we'll talk about probably during the first quarter of the budget year. First off, revenue will decrease. Revenue is a moving target in the situation that we're in right now, and most indications are that it will be reduced by the COVID-19 situation. It was very hard to get a specific figure. GMA created a wonderful Excel spreadsheet where we could put some different percentages in and massage the numbers a little bit and try to come up with some revenue projections. But even with that, it was still difficult to get to a specific number. If you remember from your April budget report, we were still in good shape at the end of April with about 84.2%, I believe it was, of revenues having been collected and only 71.5% of expenditures having been expended, and we were at 83.33% of the year. So those numbers from a budgetary standpoint really continued to be strong. Obviously, March will be different, probably in a negative sense. June most likely will be different in a negative sense because I anticipate that probably the remainder of this current fiscal quarter and yearly quarter will show a decrease in spending. So as a starting place, based on the numbers that were crunched, we determined that we would decrease revenue projections by 5% from the current budget projections that we're using. They're not current collections, not current receipts projections of the budget revenue, but actually the projections that we used in building the FY 2020 budget. So that was our starting place, and we'll talk about what those were when we did that in just a few minutes. Secondly, we want to try as much as possible to maintain our current level of personnel spending. We want to work very hard to make sure that jobs and staff are changed, or, excuse me, are saved, and because of that, there won't be, at least initially, any changes in compensation level from an increase standpoint, and we certainly hope there will be no changes in it from a decrease standpoint. I am working on a furlough plan based on compensation levels, but I'll be perfectly honest with you, I hope to never have to bring that to you for approval if we can get through the situation this fiscal year, hopefully without furloughing any workers and certainly without laying off any workers. If our revenues are down and our personnel spending levels stay the same, then obviously we've got to decrease operations and operation expenditures. So what we have done in the proposed budget is we have decreased by 10% from the current year's budgeted amounts, everything in the operating area that could be decreased. Obviously, we have some fixed costs in the operating area like risk management costs, insurance and bonds, electricity, those kinds of things that are outside of our control, but those areas that are within our control, all of those were decreased by 10%. My plan would be, if you all approve this budget, is to simply give department heads a dollar figure that their 10% reduction comes to and allow them to decide where they will make those cuts, obviously outside of personnel spending. I feel like our department heads know their budget better than anybody else. I have tasked them since I've been the interim city manager of managing their budget because that's one of the things they need to be doing and it's one of the things they'll be evaluated on sometime during the month of June. So I'm going to allow them to make the decision about where spending will be cut in their budget from an operations standpoint, if you all pass this budget. No budget is static, but this one will be very dynamic as revenue collections become more clear throughout the fiscal year, and changes will need to be made. I know it's not unusual for us to amend the budget usually once during the fiscal year, oftentimes around audit time, maybe even amend one from the previous year based on audit requirements. But I fully anticipate that we most likely will be amending this budget in some way, shape, form, or fashion at a minimum quarterly during the fiscal year, and that will be determined, as I said, about what revenues do. I'm of the opinion that once people are in a situation where they can get out and spend the money, if they have money to spend, they're going to spend it. So that may be good from a sales tax standpoint, from where a part of our revenue comes from, but then there are some other things that may either decrease or lag behind from a revenue standpoint, and I'll be able to share those. My plan is to be able to share those with y'all in much more specificity each month than we do now, just to let you know where we're coming from and then most likely amend that budget on a quarterly basis as we determine what the revenue looks like. Another thing that is difficult to talk about, but will most likely happen because of where we are in our budget year, is that services and repairs most likely will lag during the first quarter at least. I will be working with the department heads to prioritize service, not really services because they're services that we have to provide, but to prioritize repairs based on their critical nature, if they're an emergency repair, if they're not an emergency repair, the number of customers that will be affected by that repair, try to affect as many customers as possible with those repairs that are occurring. The way I see that working is those department heads will bring those repairs to me and the two of us can sit down and talk about the prioritization of them based on what we see the revenue doing. So that's a little more information, kind of unwrapping the assumptions that were used in putting this budget proposal together. So I want to spend just a few more minutes looking at the numbers, and of course, these numbers are in the budget spreadsheet that you got last night. But in terms of general fund, with the 5% reduction in anticipated revenue from the revenue projections we had for FY 20, you can see that that's going to give us about $11.1 million to spend in the general fund. Even after cutting operating expenses by 10% where we could, we still are showing budgeted expenditures of $12.7 million if all of the expenditures are spent during the fiscal year. But we had to figure out some way to make up a shortfall. By the way, that $12.7 million would have been a lot bigger pill to swallow if we had not gotten through service delivery and been able to save the money that we had been paying towards economic development for the Sibley Smith property, for the Development Authority, and for the stray pack building at Industrial Park. So that piece has really helped us in terms of being able to balance this budget. But last year, when we went through the budget, if you remember, we talked about trying to limit what we pull from water and sewer to no more than about $1.5 million and obviously try to have it a lot less than that if we could. Obviously, some of that transfer occurs during operations anyway because of needing to transfer money to fund balance with water and sewer employees being paid out of general fund and the other administrative costs being paid out of general fund for those. But with the way we've got the budget proposed right now, we would need to transfer a little over $1.6 million from the water and sewer operating fund in order to balance the general fund budget. The good thing is that because of our revenue this year, which obviously some will carry over on July 1, that a transfer from the water and sewer fund has not been made so far this fiscal year with the exception of, I think, $211,000 for fund budget. So if we can maintain that, that will certainly help with any transfers that we have to do for water and sewer during FY 2021. Speaking of water and sewer funds, we decreased those revenues as well. I like to think that those revenues may not decrease, but they probably will lag, and one of the things that I'll be doing most likely in towards the end of June, 1st of July, is bringing you some information on a resolution that you all do periodically where we will be writing off bad debt and then put that into collections from a water and sewer utility provision standpoint. We haven't done that in, I think it's close to five years, somewhere between four and five years, and it's time to do that. So that may help the revenue of the water and sewer fund a little bit as well, and we would have done that even if our revenue had been good because it's just the time for that to happen. But the projected revenue for water and sewer fund does include the water sales from the service delivery, IGA. It does not include at this point in time the sewage services that we'll be charging for them because we've got to get a little better handle on that number from accounting, and that figure most likely, or that revenue most likely will lag as well as it typically lags somewhere between two and three months anyway. Budgeted expenditures for water and sewer, you see, is almost $9.5 million, and that's with the 10% reduction as well. And you see, we ended up with a little bit of an overage there, and I would hope that that would be able to expand as we go through fiscal year. And just like the general fund, I fully anticipate that there'll be at least quarterly amendments to the water and sewer fund budget. Solid waste, you see projected revenue. We decreased that too, just to look at the budget the same across the board, but that's another area where I think probably the revenue will not decrease, but it may very well lag. So we have to work within that lag. You can see that we've got budget expenditures there of $2.1, which includes a 10% reduction there, and we actually end up with an overage there of $165, and we're going to do our best not to spend that all in one place. And then lastly, the stormwater utility fund, obviously this is the new enterprise fund that you all approved during the last fiscal year, and this utility had a little bit of trouble getting started, but it did get started. We actually built our first stormwater utility fees in December of 2019. We're still cleaning up some of the commercial accounts a little bit, and I anticipate that those will catch up. If you remember, when you approved the stormwater utility, it was projected to generate $700,000 a year. You can see we've got the projected revenue of $665, and that's just that 5% reduction on the $700,000 in case that revenue, again, like the other enterprise funds, lags. You see the budgeted expenditures there, and some of that are capital expenditures in terms of some major projects that Mr. Thomas has on his hotspot list, as he calls it, and we will be adding those and trying to prioritize those in the coming month. There actually is one that will have to be added that we did not expect that was part of what you called me about today, Ms. Walden. There's actually been a street area in the street that has collapsed where Twin Pines meets Vincent Highway because of some sewer collapse there. So that's been barricaded off, and repairs on those will begin on that one will begin tomorrow. You see, we've got a little bit of a shortfall there in the stormwater utility area. We probably will make that up if we're able to collect the stormwater utility fees that we have out there as that enterprise fund and the accounts associated with that continue to get cleaned up and get lined up with where they need to be. So that brings us to looking at dates that we'll be following for future budget meetings. First of all, just to remind you, in case any of your constituents ask about it, that an examination copy of the proposed budget will be in the City Hall Business Office beginning tomorrow morning, and also will be posted on city internet sites for folks to be able to examine if they so choose. They will need to get that through the Business Office if they come to City Hall because right now that's the only office in City Hall that's open, and they'll have the opportunity to examine that and then leave the copy with us. Next, Tuesday, May 26, we've already scheduled a call work session at 5:30 before the full meeting at 6:30, and the purpose of that is for a budget work session. And then you can see the dates there that we have for potential call budget work sessions, regular work sessions. It is my hope that we can have a first read of the adoption ordinance at our first meeting in June, which is June 9, and hopefully be in a position where we can have the second read and you all adopt the budget by June 23. We obviously will need to adopt the budget by the end of June, even if we wind up doing this year like we did last year with adopting the current budget and then amending it from there. But, you know, with the budget proposal you have before you, if revenue does what we think it's going to do, the budget is what it is. I mean, there's not a lot of fluff in there, there's not a lot to change. You all know that I wanted very much to be able to do something for staff in this budget, and Ms. Danzy had already programmed that out for me before revenues appeared to be going to take a decrease, and nothing would please me more than to be able to come back to you in a January budget amendment and say things were much better than we anticipated in revenue, and here's the things that we can do with putting the items back in the budget and maybe even looking at the possibility of doing some compensation adjustment for our staff. So with that, I'll ask you if you have any questions about this presentation. I know you probably don't have any specific questions about the budget yet since you just got the proposal yesterday, but I will certainly be prepared to answer those questions for you at 5:30 next Tuesday night.
All right. Well, can I come up or can we schedule a meeting with you before we actually come to it because I already got a few questions just from looking at it today? And if you want me to, I can come up there and meet with you, or I can tag them and save them all for our meeting? What would you prefer?
You can come meet with me and we'll meet up here in Executive Chambers. I'll put you on one end of the table and I'll be on the other end of the table and we can talk.
Okay, because I got some questions, so.
You can put her on Zoom.
Huh? What'd you say?
They should just put you on Zoom and you go ahead. She's a Zoom pro. This is her second time on a Zoom meeting with me. She was on risk management last week, so.
Yeah, this is my second time, so I've gotten kind of used to it, but, I mean, I just want to meet one-on-one with you because, and I'm going to go ahead and ask one of them. You didn't mention anything about splosh that I haven't had a chance to ask any questions or anything, but there's, so far with your presentation, you didn't mention anything about that. Have we received any or do we know when any's coming or what?
We have not received any, and based on the IGA, we're not set to receive any until July. And, you know, unless I hear different, Ms. Walden, I will be looking for some in July, but not knowing what is going to happen with splosh from a COVID standpoint, I did not put it in the budget. We have had a budget, this would be the third year we've had a budget without having any splosh, so I kind of figured build a budget without splosh, and then if we get it, that's gravy on the biscuit.
Well, I understand that, but it's coming time to be getting some, and I just want to know.
I can tell you that I'm watching the splosh numbers very closely, and just in case you want to know during this current fiscal year, the county has collected a little over $5.9 million in splosh from July 1 through April 30. Those figures tend to lag a little bit, so the May collections probably will be pretty decent as well, but I have not had a conversation with the county about if that will be forthcoming. Obviously, we'll not do. If there's any change in it, I will report that to y'all and we will decide as a group what we need to do based on that.
Okay.
But just give me a call tomorrow, Ms. Walden, and we'll set up a time for you to come up.
Okay, I just want to go over.
That's the case with all of you. I'll talk to all of you individually. I don't want to talk to you as a group because we might, we could get into the whole quorum that you're there, but I'll be happy to talk to you, to any of you individually if you so choose.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to ask my questions and get detail on them and everything. I mean, everybody on council pretty much does that, but they can ask us, and I'm fortunate enough to have the time to come up there, and I just don't want to take too much time when we are together to ask what I have to.
Well, y'all know if you ask me a question, I'm going to give you a long answer, so.
That's fine. I like long answers.
All right.
That's all I have from the budget presentation, Mayor, unless anybody else has had any questions.
We're going to try to do as you asked us then and call you individually and be prepared for next week to give everybody an opportunity to look it over. So at this point, I'm going to ask the clerk if he will. We have one resolution tonight, and that's Resolution R-2005-26. So if he will read the resolution by Capitol.
Resolution extending the terms and provisions of Resolution R-2003-15, authorizing the mayor and alderman of the city of Millisville to conduct all regular and called meetings via teleconference and/or video conference for an additional 60 days, for an additional 60-day period in accordance with the requirements of OCGA Section 50-14-1G and for other purposes.
All right, you all have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
A move. Move, we approve.
Second.
I'm sorry.
It's been properly motioned. Second, is there any discussion? You can ask your question right now, Mr. Griffin.
I just wanted to offer a little piece of clarification. I think all of you know why we're doing this, but we're doing it for another 60 days so that any council members or the mayor who would like to call in and attend meetings by teleconference can still do that and it not go against their two for the calendar year that they can have. It is my understanding, as long as we're in a situation where we have the potential to limit the gallery number in council chambers, that we will need to broadcast those meetings through our NBC TV 4 and Channel 180 abilities, and that that would be the case even with the budget work sessions. Am I correct in that, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I think that is what, from GMA's standpoint, I think just a practical common sense reading of these emergency provisions. If you're going to be put in a situation where you are limiting the number of people that can participate in person, then you would want to continue to do your broadcasting for all of your meetings, and that even includes our various commissions and so forth. We actually have a planning and zoning commission meeting coming up, I think, June 1, and that too is going to require that we continue to broadcast those. You know, typically, we're not going to have a lot of people showing up in most situations, but you cannot make that decision to broadcast, you know, the day of the meeting or the time that the meeting starts. You've got to, the public has to know that they have access whether they want to come and participate in person in a limited number or. come and participate in person in a limited number, uh, or they can participate, uh, by, uh, our TV, our, uh, teleconferencing, uh, that we are, that we are doing now. So, uh, uh, for the foreseeable future under this resolution, that will need to be the, uh, the practice, I believe, uh, to keep us in compliance with the open meetings law.
That's all I have on that, Mayor.
Is there any other discussion on this? If not, I'm going to ask for the, uh, vote and ask what your pleasure is. Clerk, please call the roll on it.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Mrs. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins? Is Mr. Mullins not with us? Okay. Uh, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Did we, was, did Ms. Shinholster vote just then? I didn't hear her.
She did, she did.
All right, well, the resolution is approved. Uh, this time I'm going to ask Mr. Griffin if he'll discuss with us about last, the last discussion on the sidewalk for the businesses.
Let me mention one more thing about the budget if I can, Mayor, uh, that I failed to mention, uh, and that is, um, provided it's okay with all you all, I will have, um, the, um, the outside agency heads come to our meeting next Tuesday and, and spend the first half of the work session, uh, sharing with you all, uh, any information about their budget request and giving you all the opportunity to ask any questions about that. We typically do that as part of our budget process, um, and that, uh, was not done, so I want to give them the opportunity to come up and, and talk to you all. They, they may take it or not, I don't know, uh, but, um, if they do come up next week, uh, they will be here at the 5:30 budget work session, uh, and I would just ask them to be brief in terms of sharing with you, uh, what their budget request entails. The library is pretty straightforward. You have to meet that from an IGA standpoint.
Ballroom house.
Boys and Girls Club, um, has asked for, uh, her, her typical, uh, amount that she asked for. She was increased, uh, last year, if you remember, uh, but I certainly want you to have the opportunity to hear from her, um, and, uh, and then, uh, the one that had the greatest, greatest request for increase was with, um, with Allied Arts and I'd like to give Brian the opportunity to come share that information with y'all. So, um, if, if there's no problem with it, I will give each of those department heads, outside department heads or directors, opportunity to come in and spend no more than, uh, eight to 10 minutes each, sharing with you about their budget request, just so you all can have that information. Okay, um, to share some more information with you about, uh, outdoor, uh, dining and sidewalk dining, uh, after our last meeting when we talked about it, um, I asked Carly to contact the restaurants downtown, uh, to let them know what we had discussed and, and to see what their, uh, thoughts on the situation, uh, were. She ended up talking with, uh, eight individuals, which basically means that she talked with 10 restaurants because two of them are, are, um, are, are, are the same person owns two restaurants in two situations. So basically the, and I can, I can certainly send you all the comments, but, uh, what she was asking about was, uh, the feasibility of using, uh, an area, uh, designated by the city, uh, as we talked about, like the bottom of the parking deck, uh, the parking lot next to, um, to post office, um, if they would have any interest in providing tables and chairs there, uh, for, uh, their customers to be able to, uh, utilize. Uh, most of them said, uh, said no, um, that, um, if they did do that, it would be simply so that people ordering curbside could then take their food there and eat, uh, which is kind of what we expected. That they would not have the waitstaff, uh, ability to be able to, to get to those tables, um, that, um, if, if nothing else, maybe the possibility of allowing sidewalk tables on Thursday, Friday and Saturday might be a possibility. The, um, uh, a couple of them said they just absolutely would not use the space, uh, and that, uh, they did not have the staff to put the tables out and the chairs out, um, even on the weekends, uh, for that to happen. Uh, they obviously all were still very interested in, uh, sidewalk dining and as we fully expected, uh, the piece dealing with sidewalk dining came up about, uh, use of alcohol on the sidewalk as well, which means that, um, if you pass the resolution allowing this temporary, uh, sidewalk dining, uh, you most likely probably would need to deal with, with the, the open container piece of that temporarily, um, as well. So, uh, ba- based on the fact that it doesn't sound like anybody would utilize anything that we set up anywhere other than on the sidewalk, uh, I, I, I think our decisions are, uh, either we will, we will do it, we will create an application for temporary permit, we will put on the application what the requirements are, and those people who can meet the requirements can apply for it and possibly get it. Those people who can't meet the requirements and obviously cannot, uh, apply for it, uh, and would not be able to get it. And I'll just remind you from our previous conversation, that the thing that absolutely has to happen is a minimum of 36 inches of clear passage, um, on one side or the, of the sidewalk or the other. There was some, uh, some sidewalk dining that actually happened, uh, over the weekend, um, and it's my understanding from, uh, Chief Swacker that it really was not an issue. Uh, everywhere that I saw, uh, had maintained a, a, a passage, at least a 36-inch passage with the exception of one, and the only reason that wasn't the case was because they moved one of the benches and when they were directed to move that back, uh, then that did provide that 36 inches of, of access, uh, that they needed. So, um, you know, that, that's where we are. Carly did say that everybody that she talked with, um, did seem very appreciative of the effort that the city was, was working on to try to help. But, uh, I think that's, I think that's where we're at in the, in the discussion now is, um, do, do we create the temporary permit? And if so, those people who can meet the requirements of it and continue to meet the requirements of it, uh, can do that and those that can't, can't, or if we just, we just don't have it at all.
How many of our restaurants, uh, in the downtown area have opened up for people to come inside and, and face them apart to maintain the distancing?
I think, Ms. Walden, I think maybe all, all but two at this point in time have. Uh, that was the last report that I got from Carly, which was on, um, Friday. And those other two may have opened up this week, to be honest with you, I, I really don't know.
Okay. Well, I know that the parking outside, if you call and order from down, from the downtown area, I know they've got them numbered where you can drive up and they're very good about bringing it out or if, or either they only allow you in to pay for it and then pick it up. So that has worked real, I mean, it, it has, seems like it's working very well with them driving up and getting it. Cause I've ordered four or five times from down there and they've brought it out.
Yeah, we, Main Street was able to put the, um, the signs up on the parking spaces early on and I think.
Yeah, you, you can actually go and find a parking place to, to do it. Normally you can't, but you can now, so.
I think the only, I kind of have an objection to that, Mr. Griffin, uh, as far as that. Where does that put us at with the drinking and, and then we're so close, so much traffic is up and down Hancock Street. What kind of liability does that put on the city?
Well, obviously based on our open container regulation, um, you cannot have an open container on the sidewalk unless it's approved as a community festival by you all or it's on First Friday based on a vote that you all, uh, a, a resolution you all approved about, I guess about a year ago now. Otherwise, uh, there's, there's, you're not supposed to have an open container, uh, on sidewalk. The, the problem that I see, if you allow si- if you allow sidewalk dining and don't include in that resolution for the temporary sidewalk dining to allow, um, open containers during that same time, um, then we're going to have a difficult time enforcing that just simply because we're going to have to have police officers downtown all the time. Now, if, if that is added, I think, uh, and, and Mr. Jordan can speak to this much better than I can, but if that is added to a resolution for temporary sidewalk dining, I think we need to be very specific about where those open containers can occur, uh, and it not just be anywhere downtown, but it be, uh, in, in the, what I call the restaurant district, which for me is the 100 block of North and South Wayne and 100 block of West Hancock.
But you could also give some consideration to certainly limiting it to the table service and, and, you know, patrons being on notice that they can't leave the table with, uh, an alcoholic drink. And you probably have to put the onus on the, uh, restaurant owner to ensure that that, occurs and you do that by, uh, having the ability to revoke their outdoor dining service with alcohol, uh, if they are, uh, by, you know, if they're, if they're, you know, kind of flaunting that and not, not being mindful of the requirement of being at the table if, uh, alcohol is going to be served.
And I think Hank and I kind of actually touched on it about, you know, we have some concerns with those that do sit outside with alcohol and their children and that's busy road right there, you know? I guess once you open it up, you're not going to be restricting who can go out there, but I'm just concerned, I just want to ask that question as far as what kind of liability it would put on the city, you know?
And the, and the major liability piece for me, Mayor, was when we were talking about, we actually had a request from one restaurant, uh, about the possibility of setting up tables in one of the planners, uh, and that was where I was very concerned about liability because if, 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 uh.
Yeah.
If someone's in one of the planners and they're not paying attention to a child or whatever, the pocket park that we're doing, uh, on the, on the, um, north side of 100 block of West Hancock, in order to get DOT approval for that, there has to be bollards and railings to keep that from happening. So that, that was where my biggest liability concern was. You know, we obviously still have some liability from a sidewalk standpoint, but, uh, the, the, the planner is where I had some major concern about that.
I think if we, if we enact, you know, proper regulation and make sure that we are, you know, monitoring all of that, then, then that liability issue probably shifts more to the restaurant owner, uh, who finds themselves in violation of those regulations. So, but I mean, I, I think we could, if, if that's what council wants to do, I think that we can, we can fashion a, uh, a temporary license that will confine it to the table, uh, and, you know.
It's almost make you think that the, the business owners wouldn't want, you know, they're already at a disadvantage, um, lost some revenue that they even want to take on that kind of liability at this particular point is, it's okay.
One thing that, uh, that I might suggest, and that is that I'll be required to serve, uh, in a plastic container. Um, that it be, uh, you know, even a red solo cup or something of that nature and that way you're not going to have a beer bottle out there, you're not going to have a glass of wine, you're not going to have glass containers that would be out on the sidewalk. And it's not going to be as noticeable that someone may be, uh, consuming, uh, an alcoholic drink, um, because hopefully everything, whether it be, um, iced tea or a Coca-Cola or, uh, a mixed drink, that all of it would be served in a similar container and, um, maybe be able to do it that way. That, that would also help keep down should somebody, something that hits the sidewalk is going, going to shatter.
I'd agree with Mr. Chambers on that one. Definitely limited to only plastic service, uh, outside, uh, for any outside dining.
So what you're talking about, Mr. Reynolds, is for flatware, plateware and, uh, drinkware?
Oh, well, I mean, we could certainly go that far. I mean, uh, that, that would further limit any possibility of, um, you know, an unfortunate accident on the sidewalk, someone dropping a china plate and it being shattered or, uh, you know, someone stepping over a metal fork. I mean, uh, we, we could certainly go so far as to say it's got to all be plasticware. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that and I, I don't think that too many of our restaurants would. But specifically I, I do mean the, the, any glassware, specifically no glass on the sidewalks, plastic service only for beverages.
Teresa and I went downtown to, uh, just to check out the scope of restaurants, uh, the end of last week and, uh, we looked into a couple of them. We actually opened the door to one, uh, they did not appear to be practicing, uh, social distancing at all and we about backed over each other trying to get back out the door.
I've talked to a couple of the restaurateurs and, uh, last week apparently everybody got citations for not following proper social distancing. And it's, it's sort of a new realm, you know, it's something that they haven't had to do before and everyone is, is getting hit with this here lately.
Everybody in the restaurant turned and looked at us and I thought, why are you looking at us? We're looking at you. You don't need to be in there like this, but, uh, we left, we went to another place and, and they had it set up, uh, very, uh, very well. You can tell it's very well thought out.
There's, there's been a lot of discussion on, uh, the downtown merchants group, uh, specifically with the restaurateurs about how to best handle social distancing, um, you know, and the guidelines keep changing. You know, just last week they, they went from, I think it was, uh, uh, 10 people per space to seven people per sp- per, per booth, uh, so it's kind of a moving target for them. But there's a lot of discussion and they're, they're all trying to find the best way forward, um, through this, through this, uh, you know, unprecedented time.
Uh, one last question, Mayor, if I could. I just wanted to find out from, um, from an application point to being approved, what kind of timeline would, would you be looking at?
Well, I think, I think you're going to have to, uh, decide whether you're going to give the, uh, city manager and, and code enforcement, basically give the city manager the authority to approve those applications, or you're going to require those approvals to come before city council. And that's really, that's really the, the question there. Obviously if you require them to come before city council to be approved, uh, then it, you know, it's going to get approved at one of our, uh, scheduled council meetings. If you offer, if you authorize the city manager to do those approvals, um, you know, it may be more expedited, but that may not be something the council, uh, wants to do. But I think that's the real, uh, question is how you're going to, who's going to authorize this temporary, and remember this is temporary, uh, who's going to authorize this temporary, licensing, uh, permitting of, uh, this outdoor dining and use of alcohol. dining and use of alcohol on the outside.
I would be comfortable with this being an administrative decision. I would be comfortable leaving this in the hands of the city manager and 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 code enforcement.
Let me say that I'm somewhat kind of feeling uncomfortable about this, because I know there are some students who are underage, who are getting alcoholic beverages as it is, and then by having it on the sidewalk, that is just open up much more doors. It's making things more open for them, and this is just my opinion. I just don't feel good about it.
I want to ask this, if there's a possibility that we may have something to look at next Tuesday, as far as a resolution?
Well, we would, I mean, we
Give me, go ahead.
We would probably do it in an ordinance form because of that, because of the alcohol component. But yeah, we could, we could have something for you to consider next Tuesday.
And I, and I don't, I'm not trying to rush anything, but I I think if, you know, if we we have something to go ahead and look at, we need to, I don't say time is of the essence, but I I think every little bit is going to help. And and, you know, you've got, a lot of these restaurants are opening, but you also have to notice they're they're opening on a limited basis. They're opening only a few days a week for or limited hours, well short of what they would normally be open, as well as well short of who they're, the numbers that they're able to serve. So even going forward, it's still a tremendous amount less than what they are accustomed to or or what they need.
Well, let's, let's take that up then. Mr. Griffin, you'll have something for us to look at, or Mr. Jordan, you have?
We will.
Next weekend. And then let's, and let's be mindful of what Dr. Lee said. You definitely need to be mindful of making sure that the business owners recognize that fact, that that's not the first time this came out. Thank you, Dr. Lee, for bringing it up, but it has been mentioned to me several times. So anybody else have anything else to discuss on that, or would put an input on that? If not, don't have anything. Mr. Griffin, you have anything else?
Uh, no, ma'am, I don't.
I do. This is something I want to ask council and and the mayor and everybody. I have been noticing that with city, city employees in the vehicles, I know that we've been offering masks and also gloves, but they're not wearing them. I noticed in the truck, two or three, four people are in the trucks, no masks are on, and that is close distance, working together on side of the road, no mask. Is there any way we can mandate that or do something about wearing of the masks?
I believe we can, can't we, Mr. Jordan, based on that graph, that that example resolution that came from GMA this past week?
One thing that I want to caution, and that is, this one, I know it applies to business, to the city, but OSHA has regulations.
You're breaking the
I mean, that's in the purview of what
Two people talking at one time.
Yep, I think we got a little
Yeah, a little internet issue. It's that time of evening.
I think they've been messing up anywhere.
Everyone's getting home and starting to stream their Netflix binge.
That's exactly right. About six thirty every evening, it's, it's a little tough.
The only thing I was mentioning is OSHA has regulations about wearing a mask. I don't know if COVID nineteen has overridden all this, but you cannot require someone to wear a mask without having been submitted to a breathing test. And this is, this is the way it's written by OSHA. It's a federal requirement, and I just, I don't know. I I know that mandating may get us into a legal situation if someone were not able to breathe properly and were to have a problem.
Well, and i- if I recall correctly, Hank, you've already taken measures to try to make sure that employees were working the same shifts with the same crews to prevent cross contamination of crews. There were already steps being taken. It certainly would be best i- i- if the, if our employees would would wear those masks and gloves. I agree with you, Dr. Lee, but as as Steve has pointed out, there may very well be a legal issue there through OSHA.
Attorney Jordan, do you know anything about this?
I think he may have froze again. He doesn't appear to be moving.
He's on the ring, Dr. Lee.
What we, what we can do, Dr. Lee, if 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 it's, if it's suitable to everybody, Mr. Jordan and I.
There you go.
We're losing him, yeah.
Mr. Jordan and I can discuss this, Dr. Lee, some more, and and if it appears that a resolution is appropriate, bring that to you all Tuesday night as well.
Sure.
That'd be great.
All right. All right, dancers, we're fading out on each other before we fade all the way out. Business to discuss to our motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Back it.
Meeting adjourned. You all be safe. Have a good night.